It's so great to see such a huge turnout. So if everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Good job. Okay, we're still waiting on our judge. So we're going to continue to the designation of meetings, day and time. The workshops are on the final Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM. And the village board meeting is the following Monday at 7:30 PM. Can I have a... Okay, can I have a motion to designate the Ramapo Times and the Journal News as the official newspapers?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried. I believe also Virginia has a list of banks to designate as our official depositories. So I don't know if Jack wants to...
Sure. The mayor has designated the Chase Bank, the Key Bank, the Provident Bank, the TD Bank, and the First Niagara Bank of the Village of Suffolk as official depositories per village fund as per section 4-412 of the village law of the state of New York.
Sign it.
Sign it.
Sign it.
Sign it.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. The motion is carried. I believe the judge is here. Okay. Okay. What I'd like to do right now is we have a presentation to make, so I'm going to step down for a moment. Okay, thank you. Recently, it came to my attention and the board's attention that a young lady here from Suffolk who's in the first grade decided that instead of birthday gifts, she wanted all her friends and family to give her pet food so that she could donate it to the high tour animal shelter. And this was something that was not a school project, which she came up with on her own, and did a wonderful job getting so much food for these animals who definitely need it. So it is my honor to call up Colette Mulhall. So this says, "Presented to Colette Mulhall, the Village of Suffolk community acknowledges the generosity you shared on your sixth birthday. You made many dogs and cats very happy." And also, we have, we'll give it to your dad. Also, the village wants to do its part. So we have a couple of large bags here of dog food, Colette.
She's too busy.
Marty, want to take this?
Thank you very much.
We'll pile them both on. You take them both?
Yeah.
There you go. Yes. Okay, Judge Ackerson is here. So Judge, if you would step up to administer the oath of office to our two newly-elected trustees.
Not exactly new.
Newly-elected.
Newly-reelated.
Newly-reelated. Judge? Okay, one to the first.
Ladies first.
Ladies first. Joe Corrigan.
My privilege and pleasure to participate in swearing-in process of our two fine trustees. Okay, Joe Corrigan, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Corrigan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees of the Village of Suffolk, New York according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Joe.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Trustee Meehan.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Meehan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees of the Village of Suffolk according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
And if I just may, I just have a couple of words to say. As you all know, our Mayor Dagan LaCour, under his effective leadership, our village has flourished. As a bipartisan board, we have passed a budget under Governor Cuomo's tax cap. We have worked cooperatively with residents' business and each other to provide the best possible services at the lowest possible cost. Day in and day out, the board and Mayor LaCour makes that all possible. So I would like the opportunity to welcome Mayor LaCour with warm smiles and a big thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor Corrigan for your kind words and for your service to Suffolk. You are a passionate and effective advocate for the families of our community, and I am so honored to serve the people of Suffolk with you. Trustee Meehan, your decades of service to the county and village bring keen perspective to new challenges. And trustee Falsiglia, who we're waiting on at the moment, he is a member of the Grand Old Party, but I find him to be a great, open-minded partner, and I thank him for his bipartisan commitment to improving the quality of life for Suffolk residents. In this historic village, where America's early leaders plotted a young nation's path to freedom, public service and civic pride are the fabric of our community. Every day, I see the warmth and strength of our village at our community center, at our dare hockey rink, and in this village hall, whose 100th anniversary we will celebrate later this month. The state of our village is strong. With the careful financial stewardship of this board of trustees, we passed a budget under Governor Cuomo's property tax cap while surrounding governments increase property taxes by double digits. We reduced our debt service while making new investments in our infrastructure. We reduced our full-time payroll without layoffs, expanded recreation for our seniors, and we're building a new playground funded by the private sector at no cost to village taxpayers. These accomplishments are solid, and they are shared with the board, with the community, and with our incredible village employees. I'd like to ask everyone who works for our village or serves on a board to stand up and be recognized for their service to the community. Thank you. As our daughters have gotten a little older, Stacy and I have tried to share with them why our family views the kind of community involvement that we have here in Suffolk is so important. I know it's a lesson learned at home for all of us. My mother was a teacher, and my father was a doctor. My mother taught the hearing impaired, and my father treated infants with heart conditions. They came home from work that forced them to defy the odds, to believe that they could make a positive change even when few others were willing to try. That's the faith that inspires my work and the optimism that strengthens my spirit. But we are a community of optimists. We know that having a downtown during a tough economic time can be a difficult challenge. But we have local merchants who demonstrate every day that our community-supported businesses can be profitable, charitable, and innovative. And our emergency service volunteers are a vivid reminder that our community remains filled with neighbors willing to sacrifice even while so much of our culture is self-absorbed. Maintaining a vital, thriving village center is essential to the future of our community. That's why we improved our lighting and crosswalks, promoted businesses with the Chamber of Commerce, and began our facade improvement program. In the coming year, we will enhance our downtown with the improvement of more than a dozen more storefront facades and expand shopper parking through relationships with local merchants. No commercial district can thrive, however, if taxes in this county continue to rise at recent rates. The oppressive property tax burden is forcing people from their homes. When I speak to some of our neighbors and longtime residents, they are terrified that one year the taxes will just get too high and they will need to move. Social Security, pensions, savings, they just don't keep pace with the tax increases. That's why I proudly and unequivocally support Governor Andrew Cuomo's property tax cap. The property tax cap has saved taxpayers across the state millions of dollars, forcing government to manage taxpayer funds with caution and care. I applaud the board of trustees for passing last year's budget below Governor Cuomo's property tax cap. I am also pleased to share with you tonight that the budget I will propose for the coming year will again be below the property tax cap, ensuring that our Suffolk community remains an affordable and attractive place for families of all ages. But we all know that the best way to reduce the tax burden is to expand the tax base. And since I've been mayor, we've had millions invested in new construction and infrastructure that supports it. Suffolk is open for business. While we grow our tax base to spread the burden, however, I am concerned that present laws do not fully share the burden. Our village is the proud home of leading Rockland institutions, Good Samaritan Hospital, the Salvation Army, Tugastie Monastery. We treasure our beacons of compassion. But it's simply not fair to have 25% of the village's assessed value exempt from any taxation and place that burden on everyone else. While nonprofit and religious organizations are our partners in our community, it is fair for them to contribute to the cost of certain public services, such as police and fire costs currently provided to them at no charge. That is why we negotiated a $30,000 annual payment from the tax-exempt Gitlow Towers to cover police and fire costs in their new proposed residential building. And that's why I'll be writing to each of our tax-exempt property owners, asking them to be active and participatory citizens and contribute to our village budget. I will vocally and publicly acknowledge every organization that responds favorably to this request on behalf of all our citizens. I am also so pleased that tonight Stephanie Fergang Adwar responded favorably to my request for her to serve as our acting village justice. Judge Adwar is a trailblazing woman who earned the respect of her colleagues and neighbors and the affection of her friends with her intelligence, integrity, and compassion. I offer a warm welcome to Stephanie's family, her friends, and the many distinguished members of our community who have joined us here tonight to celebrate with her. As our village begins to glow a little bit brighter for this season, I want to thank you again for the privilege of serving as your mayor. Stacy joins me in extending our family's warmest wishes for a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a joyous New Year. Thank you.
Mayor, I did just want to make a remark. Thank you. I really, these meetings are telecast, and I didn't really have an opportunity because I wasn't interviewed by the newspaper on election night. But I really do appreciate the support the community has given me in this last election and in many, many other elections. Suffolk voters have always been very kind to me, and I appreciate it, and I just want to make that public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, right now, I'm going to go through a number of appointments. Almost, most of these are essentially, it's my appointment, and then the board confirms the appointment. So I will make the appointment and ask for a motion to confirm. First one is deputy mayor, which is my appointment. I appoint Joe Megan Corrigan to a one-year term as deputy mayor. Village clerk, I nominate Virginia Menschner. Is there a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. This is the new girl, Virginia. Fifty-three years at the Village of Suffolk, and we're so honored. Deputy village clerk, I nominate to a one-year term Kathy Van Sickle.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Village attorney, I nominate Terry Rice to a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Assistant village attorney, I nominate for a one-year term Robert Magrino.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. And this next one, I think why many of you are here tonight, I would like to call up and I would like to nominate for a one-year term as our acting village justice, Stephanie Fergang Adwar.
Dagan, you need a motion.
Okay, we're so moved.
Second. Okay, thank you.
We better take a vote.
All in favor? Aye. Virginia's running the village now. Don't get through these meetings like this. Yes, raise your right hand.
I, Stephanie Fergang Adwar, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of acting village justice according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Okay. Tax collector to a one-year term, I nominate Joanne Chiafi.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Deputy tax collector, one-year term, I nominate Virginia Menschner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Treasurer, I nominate for a one-year term Thomas Zordan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Deputy treasurer, one-year term, I nominate Barbara Cotiers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Historian, I nominate for a one-year term Craig Long.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Registrar, one-year term, I nominate Lynn Bryant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Deputy registrar, one-year term, I nominate Kathy Van Sickle.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Things usually don't go this smoothly, just so everyone knows. Subregistrars for a one-year term, I nominate Joanne Chiafi and Virginia Menschner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion is carried. Zoning Board of Appeals, I nominate for a five-year term as member Henry Sussman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, third.
Opposed? I nominate as chairman for a one-year term also Henry Sussman.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. I nominate as an alternate to a one-year term each David Hamilton and Robert Apple.
So moved.
Second.
Jack, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Planning Board, I nominate for a five-year term Steve Jaffe.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion is carried. Chairman for a one-year term, I nominate Paul Gdansky.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Alternate for a one-year term, I nominate Frank Greenberg, Gregory Sussman, Andrew Dale, and Daniel McInerney.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The Parking Authority, I nominate for a one-year term as chairman William Schoenlieber.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. As a five-year term as a member of the Parking Authority, I nominate Neil Wanamaker.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Board of Ethics, chairman, one-year term, I nominate Deborah Schoenlieber.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Yes. Next is the Recreation Board, which is my appointment. This is a group who advises culture and recreation throughout the year and volunteers at all the events which so many families and seniors in Suffolk enjoy. And this is a volunteer position, and we appreciate all the hard work they do. So I'm going to read off the names of all those individuals who have graciously offered to donate so much time to making the lives of our residents better. Gail Curtin, Nancy Christopher, Louis Ciaccio, Barbara Cotiers, Heather Ford, Mary Guccione, Suzanne Joyce, Lynn Limerick, Daniel McInerney, Virginia Menschner, Kathy Mills, Kevin Patwell, Denise Schultz, Jonathan Theodore, and Kathy Van Sickle. Thank you all for your hard work to the village.
You're welcome.
Okay, Sewer Rent Appeals Board. For a member to a three-year term, I appoint Stanley Leschen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, opposed? Motion is carried. To the chairman for a one-year term, I also nominate Stanley Leschen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Recycling Committee, this is mine also, right? Okay, same here. Recycling Committee does not require board approval. As chairman for a one-year term, I appoint Bruce Simon. And as the members, I appoint Bruce Simon, Isabel Haggerty, Frank Hagen, Lois Hagen, Charles Barone, Sandy Stead, Patsy Wooders, and Sheila Foster. Once again, thank you all for your service to the community. And as representative to the Community Foundation, I appoint trustee John Meehan. And as a representative to the Maua River Committee, good friend of ours, somebody who cares deeply about his community and what goes on in Squires Gate, Mr. Jerry Levitus. Thank you, Jerry, for all the good work you do. I believe you're here where? Jerry, take a wave. There he is. Thank you, Jerry. And now I need a resolution to... For mileage reimbursement?
Whereas the village law of the state of New York authorizes reimbursement for mileage, now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees of the Village of Suffolk that one, the standard rate of reimbursement to people for using their own cars in pursuance of village matters, or when undertaking trips authorized by the board of trustees of the Village of Suffolk shall be 55.5 cents per mile plus tolls. This resolution will take effect immediately. I so moved.
Second.
Mr. Falsiglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried. And if there is nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. So we have a village board meeting, but obviously, I know a bunch of you are here to celebrate with Stephanie. Oleole is more appealing than us. Congratulations. Okay, good evening, everybody. We're resuming our village board meeting. This is our regular, our regular village board meeting for December. I would also like to take this opportunity, I omitted during the last meeting, to welcome here, we had in attendance, our Assemblywoman, former trustee in the Village of Suffolk and village resident Ellen Jaffe. So we are privileged to have Assemblywoman Jaffe, who served our community for so many years, here in attendance. First, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in memory of our fallen troops and in honor of those who continue to serve around the world. Thank you. I would like to set the date for the January meetings. The workshop will be Wednesday, January 2nd at 7:00 PM. And the board meeting will be Monday, January 7th at 7:30 PM. Fire Department, they are not here, they have their drill tonight, there's nothing to report. Culture and Recreation?
Good evening. Congratulations, trustee Meehan and deputy mayor Corrigan.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to start my part of the meeting by asking you how you like your beautiful, new, handsome curtains.
I like them.
Yes.
Beautiful. Thank you.
She's not here, but I thank trustee Abado and Virginia for working with me on that. Since your last board meeting, we had a dare dance on November 9th, we assisted with the Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 12th, we had lead on Friday, November 16th, the Women's Club Game afternoon on Saturday, November 17th, and the Winter Farmers Market this past Saturday, December 1. Upcoming, very busy December. Christmas parade, as you know, is this Thursday, December 6th, 6:45 PM. I can't share with you the excitement and the pride that I personally feel and I think you're going to feel when you see the float that Mr. Graham has made for this event. Richard is here tonight, and we were talking about how a few months ago, he and I sat down and brainstormed this possibility. It's happening. So for the first time, you will be having a Christmas parade, and your Santa will arrive... So for the first time, you will be having a Christmas parade, and your Santa will arrive on a beautiful float. Pearl Harbor Commemoration. The other reason for this gorgeous auditorium tonight, we're getting ready for that, and that will be this Friday night, December 7th at 7:00. Excuse me. The Elks Hoop Shoot will be held the following day after that, Saturday, December 8th at the Community Center. The week of December 10th, Mr. LaCourt mentioned it earlier in his remarks, we are really excited to be expecting the installation and delivery of the toddler playground equipment over near the pool. Hanukkah Festival will be held on Monday, December 10th. The Special Recreation and Village Board Meeting Tuesday, December 11th. Lead on Friday, December 14th. The next session of the Winter Farmers Market Saturday, December 15th. The 100th Anniversary, again, the mayor mentioned this earlier, of the municipal buildings, Sunday, December 16th between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. And the student participation of that celebration Tuesday, December 18th at 10:00 a.m. The Dare Toy Drive will be in the Community Center on Wednesday and Thursday, December 19th and 20th. And this afternoon, we finalized, although we haven't even shared it with the powers that be yet, but the employee holiday luncheon will be on Friday, December 21st. That's everything I have.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Grant Rider, anything to report?
He's got papers.
Good evening. The big thing on the agenda is the Community Development Block Grant. The application is due January 31st, and as such, the Citizen Advisory Committee, which is made up of local members of the community that you approved the membership of at the last meeting, has to meet a couple times. And what happens with that board is they come up with varying ideas to put in for the application for the Community Development Block Grant. And obviously, we're going to be looking at continuing with the facade program in downtown Suffolk. And you can actually see the first two buildings, which they've begun, the actual modifications of the facades, which would be the attorney's office and the liquor store downtown. But as the mayor mentioned in his speech, there'll be, you know, close to a dozen buildings by the end of next year, which are participating within that. Also, with this block grant, they have something new this year, where they, Joe Bate, who's the head of the Office of Community Development, wants each village or each applicant's municipalities' board, planning board, and zoning board to participate in a fair housing seminar in which you could also receive credits for that. And Joe was instrumental in talking with Mr. Bate's office, and we actually won't have to do that prior to the application, but they're going to be offering training within a few weeks after it. So thank you, Joe, for that.
Virginia, too.
Oh, and Virginia.
We tag teamed them because we wanted to make sure it was correct.
All right.
Until the spring. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Fred. Village Attorney.
Thank you. Very briefly, you have a request from Rampos Circ to exempt them from the building permit fee for a wall that they're rebuilding. We have a specific provision in the village code that authorizes the Board of Trustees to determine that a particular application is exempt from paying the building permit fee or reducing it when the building department doesn't necessarily have to be involved in it. And in this particular instance, because it's a large retaining wall, rather than the expertise of the building department, what's more appropriate is to get a private structural engineer involved in it, and that's exactly what they're going to do. And they will provide a certification satisfactory to the building inspector instead at the end of the project. So under those circumstances, they're requesting that the fee be waived, and the building inspector I spoke to today, and he has no issue with that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
How much is the fee? That we're waiving?
I don't know. He was supposed to give us that. I don't have it yet.
I believe it was, it's like 1%. I think the project was, what, 600 or 700,000?
No one told us.
It's a few thousand dollars now. But they, again, are going to pay for their engineer.
Yeah, sorry. Was there a motion? Is there a sense? I made a motion.
Jack and Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Police Department, you have no report?
No report, no report at all.
Thank you, chief. Okay. What we're going to have now is audience participation. If you want to say something, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. I'm Bill Pam, 176 St. Sperry Lane, Suffolk. Just have two points. Last month, I noticed on the bulletin board, you honored the late Mel Berkowitz by naming the blood drive. It was his name. So on behalf of all the friends of Mel, we want to thank the board, and especially Gail Collins for doing that. The second point I have, many months ago, I was here talking about the lack of a line on Yorkshire Drive, especially at night. I'm very limited with my night drive, and as a matter of fact, I was on the road tonight. I had to be extremely careful. The village did repave all of Yorkshire Drive. You did put the lines on all the main thoroughfares also, they were redone. But suddenly, from the intersection of Parkside and all the way up to the Craigmere, there was no line. I really don't follow the logic there, and I wonder if the village... Why does the village refuse to do, put a line down a main thoroughfare in the Village of Suffolk?
Mr. Pam, yeah, I believe we had discussed it. What we did is we, when this first, this came up a number of years ago, several years ago, before we started the paving project, we had a traffic study done. I believe it was under the prior administration. And essentially, what we did is we followed the recommendation of that study, and what it said to do was to put a double-yellow line on Yorkshire Drive from Parkside down, particularly because the road narrows at that point, and also that there's a lot of on-street parking. So we went by the recommendation of the report. And I can get you a copy of the report if you want. Would you like that? Take a look at it?
Yes, I would.
Okay. If, Virginia, could we work that out?
Okay.
You know, if you could give Gail your number, we'll make sure to get you one. Okay?
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. Okay. If anyone else would like to come up next?
Good evening. Roy Chudy, 16 Lonigan Drive. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to wish you an early Christmas, Merry Christmas and Hanukkah, as well as everyone here present tonight. During the month of October 2012, I received correspondence from Mr. Vincent Altieri, who is the executive director of the Rockland County Drainage Agency, in reply to a query on my part. He states that he has been in contact with the town of Ramapo and the village of Suffolk concerning sediment deposit in the rear of 16 Lonigan Drive and other areas of the Mawwa River that flows into the Squires Gate community. He states that the deposit has minimal impact on the flow of the river. He also states that there is no drainage easement to the county of Rockland at this time. With all due respect, I ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you or any member of the board or employee of this village accompanied Mr. Altieri for this assessment?
Sorry, if I accompanied him on his visit?
Yeah. If you or any member of the board accompanied him when he made this assessment.
When did he go?
This was in October of 2012.
This October?
This October.
I speak to Vince Altieri about every three to five weeks or so. We keep a monitoring of what's going on, and no one from the Village of Suffolk went because that's really his domain to go into the riverbeds, walk them, and know what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Since he further states that said deposit appears to be located on several properties, this suggests that any mechanism or component of any sort was absent for this inspection. And to my knowledge, Mr. Altieri is an esquire and not an engineer. With regard to this, that would make said inspection subjective and speculative. I request an individual license in this area to make an inspection and document for the record the results of his or her findings. My first complaint to Ms. Joe Corrigan requesting an inspection, a village employee visited the property in question, and if they're visually scanning the site, declared that it is a normal situation. This, yet, is another subjective opinion as opposed to a professional examination. I ask this current administration if they were or are now currently aware that the storm drain release pipes feeding into the Mawwa River in Squires Gate is without an easement. Is it with... Is everybody here aware that there is no easement?
No, I'm not aware of it.
This is from Mr. Altieri.
I wasn't even...
So my question to that would be, who was responsible to clean and maintain, to inspect and document and keep records of this? It is acknowledged that on a legality issue, village and towns are allowed to empty storm drains into a river stream because it simply has to have a place to go. However, when the river and streams are but private property, the additional thousands of gallons, and I do mean thousands of gallons, of street stormwater surge from the Village of Suffolk exacerbates an already compromised situation. The Mawwa River, which flows directly into this Squires Gate community, cannot physically withstand the natural water flow. Storm drainage into the Mawwa pushes flooding to even further limits.
Mr. Chudy? This is all new to everybody sitting up here. So, you know, if you have something written, because no one's going to be able to respond to this, if you have something in writing, we'd be happy to give it to whomever is the appropriate person to answer each one of those.
Okay. I will. I'll be glad to give this to you. I just want this to go on the record.
Well, it will if you give us something in writing.
That's fine. So is it proper for me to just continue with acknowledging what you just said?
Well, there is a time limit, but if you want to submit your...
I'm almost, I'm almost finished.
Well, if you... That's fine. But, I mean, if you want to submit it in writing, that's fine, too.
A domino effect is now created, and none of which is good. A negative environmental impact is created as it aids in soil bank erosion. This in turn leads to the rooting system of large trees aligned along said riverbank becoming exposed with little to no anchor system. High winds make these trees subject to fall on property homes. This in turn leads to an accident-prone condition for any residents in the vicinity, as property damage, serious physical injury, or the possibility of death may occur. During the last storm, an incident of a large tree located on the very same riverbank in question did naturality occur. The rooting system of the tree was in all probability compromised from water flow and fell from the rear of 72 Lonigan onto the home of 70 Lonigan Drive. Thankfully, only property damage was reported this time. Lastly, the street water drainage brings with it a multitude of adverse contagions: vehicle oil and antifreeze droppings, animal waste, garbage, lawn pesticide treatments, et cetera, et cetera. When the Mawwa River floods, it brings these pollutants into the residents' homes, which now creates a health crisis. As was reported and documented from Hurricane Irene and said to the Rockland County Health Department, many residents, along with their pets, fell victim to an assortment of ailments. An alternative exists to this problem, and the answer is the old Tilcon Quarry located in back of Avon. Every effort must be made to divert this additional street stormwater from the Mawwa River and our homes into the quarry. We should not be a captive evidence, audience, to Goldstein developers or any other enterprise on whether or not this is implemented. Thank you very much for your time. And, Mr. Mayor, I would...
Sure. We can give that. We'll give that to Virginia.
Thanks, Roy.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. We'll pass it down.
If anyone else would like to come up?
Good evening. Tim Janatino, 2 Memorial Drive, Suffolk. I have two questions. I'll do the short one first. Does anyone on the board or the mayor or anybody working for the village have any idea when the Montebello Bridge will be reopened?
I don't.
So the one on Montebello Road by the, by the Circ and the Knowles? Yeah, they've been, they've been working on it. Originally, it was supposed to be over a year, December, and they're still designing it. So it said, they said it would be over a year to design and then build. I haven't gotten an update probably in the last month and a half, but I will, I will check on it.
Okay. My next question is in regard to the grants that were applied for after the storm Irene. I believe if I looked this up correctly, there was about four major ones. One for a detention basin to pick up the water from the Chestnut Street Bridge and the Athletic Fields for $750,000. One for the water well housings for $165,000. One for the wastewater treatment plant for flood panels for $310,000. And the biggest of which is the dredging of Lake Antrim for $3,350,000. Have we heard anything?
No, we have not.
Is that customary?
Yes, it is.
The only reason I ask is it customary is because the people in New York City, Rockaway and other areas, they're already knocking down their homes.
Yes.
200 homes are being demolished.
Correct. They have no homes. That's correct.
Well, I wasn't going to go into this, but we have four people that don't have homes, and their homes are still sitting.
And you think FEMA bought those people out already, or are you just listening to them?
I don't know who bought them out. I'm not claiming FEMA bought them out. But I noticed that the city of New York went in and condemned them and is knocking them down.
That's true.
16 or 18 months later, we have four people who, for the grace of God, would still be homeless.
So you think we should have condemned the houses and made the people pay for them to take them down themselves?
I don't see that the people in the city are paying for them to be taken down.
Are you sure about that?
Did I say I was sure about that?
I'm not.
I'm going by the news broadcasts. No one mentioned the 200 homes that they started their takedown were being done at the expense of the owners. My question is, if the city can do it, why can't Suffolk?
Well, there goes the tax gap. Oh, thank you so much. And with a smile, too.
Rich Carp, 88 Lonigan. First of all, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and hope you have another good year. According to what my friend and neighbor Roy says, I agree with him 100%. But at times, in watching the board, you seem to be laughing and joking and talking and not even listening to what the man is saying. Just try to put yourself in his position or my position or the people that are homeless position. And then you'll know why I'm up here every time talking about it. That's enough for this. I'm not going to talk about the river. I'm not going to talk about the houses or anything like this. I have another project. Our illustrious streets that were so-called done. Mr. Zawiki mentioned to you what I told him. The streets are cracking. There's cracks going all along the streets, and they're getting bigger. Now, what's going to happen in the cold and the snow and the rain, the water gets in there, it ices up, it's only going to get worse, and eventually, you're going to have that, the slurry coat, I don't know how far down it goes, but you're going to have more cracks on that street. And if something isn't done before the real snow and bad weather comes, we're going to have a lot of problems.
I will talk to him about that.
And I wish you guys had have left the streets alone. They're worse now than they were, and I don't know whether the streets are paid for, whether, you know, and if they weren't paid for, whether the job that we got was what was asked for or was what they were told. I don't think that, I don't think that the job to dig them up and, you know, to actually repave them, I don't think you guys asked for that. But there are other streets in the village that had the slurry coat on, and it's like night and day compared to what we have. And I hope that is adjusted. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment?
My name is Lois Hagan. I live at Henzenary Court. I was wondering, have we received money from FEMA? Have we received any money from FEMA?
In regard to?
Squires Gate.
No, we have not received any money personally from the, for the village or homeowners?
Either.
Well, the homeowners have received money, but that's their story to tell. The village itself right now has not received any money for Squires Gate.
What, what since though? No, we got reimbursement for all the damages we did. We received all the money for the garbage, for overtime, for our police and, for our police and fire. So we received a lot of money. I mean, that went to our emergency response and recovery.
Okay, so we have received money and it's been allocated to different.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, Department of Public Works, there's no, oh, sorry, sir.
George Gaberson, 26 Prairie Avenue. Of course, recently here with Sandy, it put a lot of people on edge, particularly people who are in a flooding area. And fortunately, there was no, no outcome, any disastrous outcome as a result of it like there was a year ago. But I think we have to really take this seriously, the people that are in those flooded areas or floodplain areas, how stressful it's got to be. And as a town, as a committee, as a community, we have to share that, that feeling that they have and take it very seriously. And when it comes to the quarry project particularly, and the ability that possibly this could be a saving mechanism for pumping the water into an area to diminish and to take the fears away from the people who live in that area, I think would be, is paramount. We have to take that very seriously. That's all I want to say for the record right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing for the Department of Public Works. Next is Village Clerk.
First thing is, we have New Rock, it's a live entertainment. I understand that Terry says we have to set a public hearing.
Correct.
This is a new application. And our next meeting is January the 7.
Okay, do we have a motion, set it for, what, 7:40?
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, you said no?
No, I said aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
He's all the way down there.
I know, down there.
Yeah, I have no one to talk to.
Motion's. Hey, your party likes talking to empty chairs.
Clint Eastwood. Yeah, put a Clint Eastwood here.
Um, okay, sorry, Virginia.
The next, we have mayor, is the annual Walk to Remember, which is going to be October the 6, 2013. And that usually starts down at the Chestnut Street and goes up to the Good Samaritan Hospital.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
Some motion?
Sumo.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, next thing, the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce is requesting their street dates for April the 28, June the 2, and September the 15.
Sumo.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, the next thing is, we have special permit, is ole, ole, live entertainment. This is a request to renew their entertainment.
And this is similar to the, I mean, the same terms and conditions?
Would be the same, yeah, you know, the 90 decibels, subject to revocation, and signing a note.
Ole, ole, we've never, no problems, right, Chief?
There's been no fight there, right?
Ole, ole. Okay.
The reason this is different than New Rock, New Rock was revoked, so it's a new application, this is a renewal.
Okay.
I think, are they here?
No.
New Rock was just here, this is for next month.
Yes, a new, a new one, so there's a public hearing, this is a renewal, so is there a motion to renew the permit, subject to the terms and conditions?
Yes, sumo.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
That's it.
Okay. Tom, anything from you? He's wearing a suit.
Hey, Tom, you have a party to go to?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I just wanted to let the board know that I am going to be putting up the budget timeline on the web this week, if I can figure it out, but that's it. And we'll be proceeding, I'll be handing out every budget worksheets to everybody, and we're going to start moving on the budget and get it done.
Excellent, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Look forward to a nice budget season. Okay, are there any items from the trustees? No. Mayor, I have one item. We are fortunate that the, that we are getting a donation from the U.S. Department of Interior slash National Park Service of a historical plaque at Avon Park noting that it's part of the Rochambeau Trail. So that will be, when are we getting that, Virginia?
Craig Long is going to work with them.
Craig Long is working on it. I also, let me say it here, December 16, yes, the, oh, there, okay. We have a motion to accept that donation, so it's on village property?
Sumo. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and if that's it, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.